We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha. Madam Chair.
Yes, and I -- please note that Commissioner Morgan has been asked to be excused from the meeting today. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 16, 2011, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, August 30, 2011, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. May I approve item B? Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I come here today a little bit as a concerned citizen and taxpayer.
Could you state your name and address?
Absolutely. Ryan Blumkin, 700 South 72nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114.
Okay, thank you.
So I come here as a concerned citizen and taxpayer. In these packets which you have received, it shows one example of why I am concerned. Specifically, it shows that identical information was presented in a Board of Review or Board of Equalization protest on the exact same property in 2010 and 2011, and the results in the decisions handed down from the Board of Equalization are what I would refer to as polar opposites, resulting in a difference in the valuation on this specific property of approximately 40 percent. And I'd like to read the comments based on this identical information. Year 2010, comment, "The equalization argument is supported by assessments for properties in relative proximity to the subject. The comparables submitted are considered to be in a similar neighborhood and have good degrees of comparability and therefore do support an equalization argument. The median assessment is 209.79. Applying this yields a value of $784,000." Identical equalization argument presented in 2011, and here are the comments. Comment, "An equalization argument cannot be sustained with presenting only two comparables in dissimilar neighborhood. The market information is found not to be persuasive." And I'd also like to note the referee name and the coordinator name were the same on both of them. So when the same information is presented and the rulings are polar opposites, why should the taxpayers have faith in this process? Would be one of my questions. Another question I'd have is can this process be improved so that it's fair and that if you present the same information, you get the same results? And thirdly, I'd ask, would an improvement in this process result in less appeals to Turk? As you know, Douglas County, a majority of the appeals filed to Turk are from Douglas County. So that's all I have. Is there any questions for me?
No questions. We do appreciate the information, and you know, each year we look at our process and see if there's ways that we can improve, and this is an interesting case that we will definitely take issue with to talk about. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, very briefly. We are trying to find ways to improve the process also each and every year, and it's something we always discuss. And some of the differences, you most likely had two different evaluators and two different opinions about what is equal.
It says it's the same one. Now maybe the person changed in that position, but it says BowRef 09 and CHMCOR 09 in both years.
Okay, yeah. I guess I don't have any further comments.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Well, we appreciate that.
Thank you. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Mr. Blumkin, I'm gonna, if you would, could I have another copy? I gave mine to someone else.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I do intend to follow through on this and look this all up and get back in touch with you. So do you have contact information on here, or do you have a card? If you would take a moment just to write your email down there, I'd appreciate it. And I do appreciate you bringing this to us, and like Commissioner Kraft said and Commissioner Borges said, we're always looking for ways to improve it, and this is helpful. I'll put my cellphone here, too. I should print my name here, too. I think we have an uncle in common, Bobby Batt.
Yep.
Bobby's my uncle, too.
Oh, really?
No, not really.
You know, I do have one question. Did you take advantage of the Assessor for Commercial Properties has been sending out early notices, and then, you know, people can come in, the commercial properties can come in and talk to them. Did you happen to take advantage of that this year?
In some certain cases, yes. In most cases, no. Quite honestly, if you ask me my opinion on that process, I would say, my opinion and also the people who do this often is that it's more of a time waste from our perspective than anything else. But I did, and throughout the years, yes, I have met with them. Typically, I've had no action from that, never recommendation, but often at the Board of Equalization level, you know, I've received reductions.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that because we've been recently dinged by the State of Nebraska to offer that service to all taxpayers, residential and commercial, at a tune of about $650,000 additional dollars. So we have a few years to implement it, but maybe we'll work harder on the process as we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, there's Resolution D through G. Any questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha. Madam Chair.
Here, Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 16, 2011, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, August 23, 2011. The complete listing is in the office of the County Clerk Comptroller. Motion approved. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda, Items A through H, for a total of eight items. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Madam Chair, if I may, just introduce Maeve Kavanaugh and Grace Kavanaugh.
Well, hello.
Who are attending today to see what Dad does on Tuesday mornings.
All right.
Seems like just like yesterday that Commissioner Duda was bringing his little ones, and they're all grown up already, so.
Well, welcome. It's good to see you all grown up. What grades are you in now? Sixth? First? All right, well, welcome.
They start tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, we have a presentation, the Douglas County Wellness Committee update. I put this on because I know we get presentation or updates throughout the weeks, months, a year, on our wellness activities, but there is so much, so many good things that are going on that I thought it would be worth having Kathy and company come to the board meeting and really give us all the update at one time. So Kathy?
Good, great, thank you. Kathy Goodman, Employee Benefits. I think we were here about a year ago, giving you a presentation on what we are doing, and in the last 12 months, we have done quite a few things. The presentation, the PowerPoint, rather than listening to me talk and not seeing anything, Connie Lehman, our graphic artist, has developed this little presentation, so as we go along. First of all, we did at the Health Center what's called a Lose to Win program. United Healthcare has a program where they train the trainer, and they came in and Jennifer Byshime and two other individuals at the Health Center were trained, along with myself, on how to present this program to our employees. It's a generally eight-week program. The Health Center ran this, as I said, with Jennifer Byshime, Pat Garringer, and I think Marty Christensen were the three individuals that did the program out there. They ran two sessions out there. The first one was an eight-week session. They had approximately, I think about 10 to 15 employees that went to this. It was a half-hour program. They got weighed in, their diet was looked at, they wrote down all their foods. They ran the second session because it was, they paid $20. For that $20, they were provided a little calorie booklet, and at the end of that, then they had a healthy lunch. So they basically paid for their own lunch. It was really a little bit of money that the Wellness Committee made off of that, but most of it went back into that program for their healthy lunch at the end. Plus, the top two winners that lost the most weight were given a gift card prize each time. The second session ran for 12 weeks, and in those two sessions, a total of 60 pounds were lost, again, by approximately 10 to 15 individuals that participated. That was at the Health Center. We continue to do Weight Watchers. Weight Watchers here at Work in the Civic Center is in its fourth session, and a total of 15 to 22 participants are in that each session. 641 pounds have been lost so far in that program in three sessions. As I said, the fourth session, and you'll notice on the flyers on the bulletin boards, is just getting ready to start that fourth session. We did a health fair last year for the first time in 18 years I've been here. We had over 750 people. Employees that participated went through that program. We had 12 different vendors. All of our insurance carriers were there, along with some other individuals. They gave blood pressure checks, sugar checks, they did back checks. It was an overwhelming response. I was quite surprised. We will do that again this year in October. We had about 60 different winners from prizes that were donated. One individual won a flat-screen TV, so we had some pretty nice prizes donated, again, all by different vendors and area businesses. We started a winner walk program last year. Phil Rooney, I'm not even, sorry, I'm not even doing the, sorry. These are some of the winners. You'll see some of the employees that participated. Let me get caught up here. Sorry about that. Our winner walk program, Phil Rooney sponsored this. Basically, you met on Farnham at 12:00. We had somebody that, I think Laura Marcel did the 11:30, and Deb Peterson did the 12:30. So it was a 30-minute walk, basically all inside. You'd walk across to the woodman, and then everything is inside, and it ended up being about a 30-minute walk. This was the second year that we did that, and I'm understanding that Phil will do it again. So anybody that wants to participate in an indoor walk, basically just walking across the street during the wintertime, you can participate and continue to walk in that. We did a winner walk challenge last year. We kind of focused it around St. Patty's Day. We had, let's see, we also did, there was a winner walk at the Health Center. The winner walk included, really which helped a lot of employees because you just didn't have to walk. If you drank water, if you ate your fruit and vegetables, and you did physical activity, you got points for all of those different items. And these were the three winners, top winners of that program. Employees, I've found, even if it's a little something that they get for winning, it's a big deal because they were calling me, you know, who's the winner? Who's the winner? So they're enthusiastic about participating with a little bit of a token. The Health Center, because it's unique in its own little community and a little bit better at doing things like this, they did a Walk to Washington. So they had a map, and you, every little 20 minutes, you got so far on the map, and you walked to Washington, and then you walked back to Omaha. This next year, I'm understanding they're going to do Walk to the North Pole, and they're going to do that around the Christmas. They felt that the walk to Washington was a little bit too quick. Everybody got there too fast. So they're going to walk to the North Pole and hopefully around the Christmas time, be at the North Pole. Let's see. We had a basketball league that was at the Youth Center. Dan Archie, who's one of our members of the committee, organized this. The Wellness Committee participated a little bit in providing winning T-shirts. The individuals that participated, there were six different teams. They were from employees throughout the county, not just Youth Center. They did the Sunday afternoon from March, or February 13th to March 27th, and again, we provided T-shirts for the winning team. So that was pretty successful, and I'm understanding that they'll do that again this following year. Lunch and learns, kudos to Jennifer Byshime. She did Lunch and Learns every week from May 5th to July 27th on a variety of different subjects, from the National Safety Council coming, to diabetic education, to stress management. Unfortunately, there was only about eight or 10 participants in each one of the classes, but those individuals were pretty committed to go into these. It was a 20, 30-minute presentation. United Healthcare helped out, and a lot of area businesses that can provide some of the Lunch and Learn speakers, so we're really appreciative to that. I don't know that we'll do that again next year, that many of them, because it was a little overwhelming for the small participation. We did offer a diabetic education Lunch and Learn here in the Civic Center. We had about 20 participants. Each of those participants received a free testing monitor, and that went over pretty well also. We are now participating in the National Walk at Lunch, which is a NACO-sponsored event. We started it June 20th. We're going to run it till June 30, or September 30th. Those will turn their miles in. Two winners from Douglas County will win the top miles, and then we will submit those to NACO to see if our particular county would have the most miles. So we did the Walk for Life, which was April 20, or excuse me, National Walk at Lunch. Those are some of the pictures from that. Pilates at Work. This is a pretty exciting event. It happens every Tuesday at 1:00, or 1:30, or 12:00, excuse me. Leela Frazier from the Public Defender's Office is a certified Pilates instructor, and she teaches this class at no cost. We have, oh, probably 15 to 20 individuals, two or three guys, that participate in this. We appreciate John Ewing offering up the space in the Harney Level that they have down there in the Treasures Office that they're not using. It was a trial basis, and it started July 5th. The concern was it would be too noisy, but Pilates is a pretty low-key, quiet exercise, strengthening and stretching, and so it's very quiet, and there's no complaints, and it'll go on as long as Leela wants to continue to do that. We will try, now that this has worked out, that maybe we can do some other type of exercise classes within the county. Let's see, what else? We purchased a wellness banner. You can kind of see it here. We do have it back there. I can stretch it out for you. For different events that we're going to have, we took this to the Corporate Cup Cycling on Sunday, and we got pictures that we'll present to you later, put on the website. There was about 10 different bike riders that were county employees that participated in this, and we took their picture in front of this banner. We'll use this banner for different events, when the health fair, other kinds of things that we might do. It's nice and big, and it kind of recognizes, and we're now basically in print. We have a bike club. Lee LeJour, the HR Director, kind of organizes this. He does different events, usually around the holidays, Veterans Day, Columbus Day, Labor Day, organizes some kind of bike ride, and we've got quite a few individuals that participate in that. Corporate Cup Run. I'm going to let Dennis Rookstuhl, who is our Chair for the Corporate Cup Run, talk about this, and before he does, I'll just finish up with some of the things that we are looking to do for this next coming year. We're working on maybe getting some space or gym equipment here within the Civic Center. We're looking for more Lunch and Learns, more bike rides, and just a lot of good things that are happening. Employees are really grateful to participate in these things and are looking for the next challenge. So it is a challenge to do this. It's an extra amount of work. We have a great team of members of our committee that are committed to do this, and truthfully, I'm very grateful to the County Board that support this. We have a very small budget. We do a lot of stuff for a little tiny budget that we have, and I know for a fact that it's making a difference in a lot of people's lives. A lot of weight has been lost. A lot of people are exercising and thinking and doing things a little bit healthier. So we're grateful and appreciative to your support, and I'll let Dennis talk about the Corporate Cup.
Good morning.
Hi, Dennis.
Dennis Rookstuhl, Douglas County Treasurer. I just wanted to come here this morning and let you know about the Corporate Cup event, which is going to be on September 18th. The Wellness Committee is again promoting this event throughout Douglas County. This is our third year of doing this, where we've had a lot of effort in promoting this. The Corporate Cup is a very exciting and rewarding race here locally. It's very, very good for participants. It consists of a two-mile run-walk, or a 10K, or otherwise a 6.2 mile run-walk. The Corporate Cup benefits American Lung Association, so not only is it a good event to get employees out exercising and get them active, it's also for a worthy cause. The Wellness Committee provides a table for employees as a meeting place. We usually like to go there, get a team picture. We provide snacks, and then we send everyone out on their way to get some exercise. Last year, we nearly doubled the participation in the Corporate Cup. We had 88 participants last year, which is roughly double over the year before, and we'd really like to double that again this year. So on behalf of the Wellness Committee, I'm here to invite all of you, the board members, and all of Douglas County and their family members to come out September 18th, join us in the Corporate Cup Run, get everyone active and moving. Okay?
All right. Did you bring registration forms?
Yep.
That was kind of like the push, you know? I'll give it to them.
Yeah, I'll send everybody an email. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I just want to know if we can have an entry where one of the commissioners could pull me in a wagon. On a serious note, I, that's right. On a serious note, I do want to say I am just bowled over by the way this has taken off. I had no idea that several years ago when we got this started that it would do this, but Kathy and Dennis and others on that committee are just hell-bent on making this work, and it's really a pleasure to see you folks accomplish what you have. And we need to, you know, support you, and I, for one, intend to, and I'm sure the County Board will do whatever we can to support you with that, setting up the equipment operation somewhere where they're exercised on site. So I just want to say congratulations. I'm always so pleased to receive communications from you, Kathy, on this, and it's just a great job.
Well, we do appreciate the support. Talking about the Corporate Cup, just one more second. Thursday, the 25th, is the last day. You can submit your entries for the T-shirt. We have a T-shirt contest. The winner that gets the design for the Corporate Cup T-shirt will win a $50 gift card and a T-shirt. So the 25th, if you've got any kind of artistic talent, turn in your entry by Thursday, and you might be a winner. We will show you our banner because we're really very proud of it.
Come up this way. Come this way, in front of the podium. Oh, that's good. So there's no turning back now. We're in print, and I think we're stuck with this now, so, but it is a good thing. You know, we probably should start entering in parades, like the Miller Days Parade is Saturday. We should have had a team walk in that parade. We should think about that as an activity.
Thanks again for your support.
Thank you very much.
And you all are invited to walk as well.
Mike's going to bring his wagon.
All right. Well, thank you again, Kathy and Dennis and Connie, for being here to talk about it. We'll move on to Finance Committee. Commissioner Kraft, since Commissioner Morgan isn't here today.
The finance report is presented.
Okay. Administrative Services. We have the one resolution laid over from last week. It's a resolution authorizing the Chair to enter into an agreement with Aptitude Solutions for Project Archive Access to provide a record-searching service for the Registered Deeds Office.
Yes.
Just a second. Commissioner Boyle, was that left over?
Left over.
Okay, Commissioner Kraft?
Last week, we had questions about encumbrances, and I've learned a lot about the encumbrances since then. I think it is our duty to grant this, and Diane, could you come up? You have a request before us, and you're using money from encumbrance. Do you know how much more money you have encumbered?
Okay, when you look at that proposal, I think, I remember last week you mentioning something like $91,000. That's only one portion of that. The money we have encumbered, and I'm going to lean to Denise, is it $275,000? About $275,000 that we've encumbered through the last four budgets. This project will probably take all of that, because what you saw also in the proposal is that the cost for image conversion is X.04 per image. They could only give us an estimate of the images because they really don't know until they get into our microfilm how many images we actually have. So we're anticipating that full amount, and we're hoping there might be some left, but we wanted to make sure we have enough that we didn't have to come to the Board to, you know, to complete the project.
And do you have any encumbrances other than this?
No.
In play?
No. This was just for the specific project we've been trying to get started for the last several years.
So nothing's, for the other project, you'd like us to work on Project Aristotle? Nothing's encumbered?
Uh-uh, because we knew that this had to be.
Step one.
Yeah.
Okay. I would make the motion for approval. Second.
Diane, can I just ask a question again? You said that you encumbered for the last four budgets, the $275,000. What's, I'm not finding in here that figure. The figure for...
In where? I'm sorry.
In the documentation that we have?
In the proposal?
Uh-huh.
Okay, if you add everything up, when we entered into the idea of Project Archive Access, we anticipated having the index books scanned and having a, when they went online to search the index books, that they would have to request their individual document, email that request back to our microfilm department, now that we have the electribers that pull that microfiche, and then my employee would have to pull that. We would have to have some software built into our reader printers for the microfiche to be able to scan that internally and electronically send it back to that submitter from wherever they may be. During the workflow process with Aptitude, they brought up the idea, well, it would be better that we didn't have to use that manual labor and do requests and back. So that's when the secondary part of this project ensued, that they would scan, because eventually you want all of your archived documents on image to complement the image repository you have currently. So they added that on, which is where you get the per-image fee. So we estimated, we went down to our vault, we went through all of our microfilm, and have a logged inventory, which approximately how many images should be on? a logged inventory, which approximately how many images should be on that inventory? And came up with, I think it was 2 million, between 2 and 3 million. And so, I know it's a lot. It's a lot. And so, we just, we calculated that to an estimated dollar amount, added to what you see in print as actual dollars and came up with an estimated total cost for that project.
Which is what?
Close to $275,000. Because I think you have 91,000, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize. You have 91,000, you have 60,000.
Oh, you're saying the 2 million are the images?
Yeah, the images. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, my God, no.
It was not...
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, got it. So, $275,000 and that's what's budgeted for, but we also then have the additional $3,500 in maintenance fees.
Each year.
And that's an annual...
Yes.
Thing. And so, and that's not in this year's budget?
No, or next year's budget. That $3,500 will, on implementation, will follow for one year. The first year's covered in the cost. So, the second year after implementation, that $3,500 will ensue. And what we feel very comfortable with, with the, as e-recording grows, where our postage dollars costs are diminishing. So, between our lower postage and our mail back for documents and, what was the other thing? The what? Oh, and the toner that we go through, which is quite expensive. Between the savings we have on all of those items that we run on a daily or monthly basis will easily compensate and total that $3,500.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I, you know, I know that this is a service that people will use, I think, probably pretty occasionally. I mean, and I have used services of the Secretary of State to get corporate information occasionally and I have an account with him. What do you see as far, unless I've missed it, if I apologize if you've already told us about it, but what do you expect in revenue from people? Like, just recently, I asked you for some information on deeds. What information, how much would that have cost me to get that? Anything?
As, and we have a four-tier premium service level on our website that we started with our, just the DocCenter images when they converted over. With the addition of this index book project, that will also merge into their subscription service. For the instance of you, Mike, is that you could have gone on that website, not so much with Archive Access, because with Archive Access, you're going to need that book and page or that instrument number information. But, once you got that information from me, you say you had five deeds you wanted to find, I'm going to say it's this instrument number, this book and page, you could have gone online and entered in, and not as a subscriber, as an on-demand user, and you could have entered in that instrument number or that book and page of whatever document you're looking for and it would have brought up an image for you as a preview image with a watermark. You could have ascertained if in fact that was the document you were looking for. You could have read through it. You may not have needed to print it out, so you had the ability to read into that document, find out all the information that's on that document and what you may need it for. Should you decide that you needed to have a hard copy of that and needed to print it out, then you would have gone into our e-commerce section through US Bank, a secured site, and you would have listed whatever documents you wanted to print through e-commerce. You would have paid $5 per document and there's just a $5 convenience fee through US Bank, through your secured site. They would have given you a confirmation number, then you could have printed them out. You would have had them for yourself.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
And the $5 convenience fee and the $5 per document, what percentage does the bank keep?
The $5 convenience fee is the bank's.
That's the bank's, okay. And the $5 per document?
Would be our revenue, general fund revenue.
Total, okay. Have you done a ROI, return on investment on this, how long it will take to pay back?
Not at the...
I know it's going to be...
Not at this time for this project. We've been too busy working on the Aristotle ROI.
Okay, because, you know, that'd be very helpful, especially for future projects. What is our ROI? How fast will this million-dollar investment, when we get to that part, pay itself back?
Okay, but this isn't that...
No, I know this isn't, but that's important to some of us. I know it was important to PJ because he asked me and it's important to me.
So, are you talking about Archive Access or are you talking about Aristotle?
No. I'm talking about anything that's presented by anybody to us, asking us for money. What is our ROI? It's a normal thing I look at when I'm making an acquisition for my store.
Well, we presented an ROI for Aristotle. We haven't presented an ROI for Archive Access because we had the money already set aside throughout, through my budget, so, I mean, we could put one together, you know...
Well, it's too late to do it.
Right, right.
Invested it, but for us to make a decision when we have to make one, it's always nice to have, okay?
Commissioner Boyle?
One other question that occurred to me and I just remembered it. Several years ago, one of your predecessors was charging fees that turned out to be...
Illegal.
Illegal or not allowed.
Exactly.
Are you able to, I was looking for a finer word, but anyway, inappropriate. Anyway, I was wondering whether, do we have the authority or do you have the authority to charge these fees that you're talking about?
You're talking about the fees to print?
Right. Well, the fees, for example, just what you went through with me, where I have to go through the US Bank and all this other stuff. Do we have authority to charge users those fees or do we need it?
Through that past audit and the uncovering of my predecessor's charging fees, and I don't know how he was, how those fees were being charged, that's where the convenience fee came recommended, was through the external audit at that time. By law, we cannot, we cannot, how do I want to say this? We can't like charge interest or charge fees to do something. Our statute says that our fee, the $5 for the document, that we can charge a common sense, per se, a fee by statute to print, to subscribe, because it backs up to the cost of us to provide that convenience. But, the fee itself for the e-commerce, that's through the bank and that's what came about from that audit, saying that it can't be a fee that we keep. It has to be a fee labeled a convenience fee that the bank keeps. So, the relationship, basically, when you embark on a transaction, between to get a print, you're actually, your transaction is with you and the bank, not with you and the county.
Okay. And I, I know it's a little late in the game, but I don't want to be surprised, you know, three years from now, if some, the state comes back and says you owe us, you have to refund all these fees. Would it be reasonable to ask our Chief Administrative Officer, to ask for the county attorney to do a little research and make sure that we're on solid ground?
Sure. I mean, I have no problem with that. I'm sure it's already been done several years ago when this issue, you know, incurred.
All right.
But, no, there's no issue. We've been charging convenience fees ever since, ever since, probably prior to me.
All right. And I don't mean to be, you know, causing work that we don't need to do, but if, Ms. Kelly, if you could ask the county attorney for an opinion about whether or not the, these convenience fees are permitted, that we have statutory authority to do that, I'd appreciate it.
And you know, what I could do, maybe to assist in that, I have most of the county attorney opinions on file in my office. And now, I'm not sure if I have them to go back that far because there wasn't a lot of paperwork left for me when I came into office. So, but I will look into my notebook that has county attorney opinions in it. And if I find one that addresses that, then that might save you some work too.
Good. Thank you.
No other questions or comments? There's a motion and a second to approve. Please vote.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Human Resources Committee, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Legislative items have been brought to my attention. Is there a need for, no need for executive session? There is a Administrative Services Committee meeting immediately after this meeting in room 903. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No. And a duty after second.
Please vote. Should have just had the meeting right here.
Motion passes.